Have Maisy test her microphone because that was where it all started.
Can you hear me all right?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, sorry about that interruption. I think we got everything back. So we'll be in the middle of a question, I'm sorry. Or any other questions? Go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you for doing this. This is really helpful to hear and it sounds all super positive and exciting. My questions were around the follow-up and follow-through. Can you give us some examples of actionable things that might be happening and coming forth because of these conversations? I think right now towards the end of the school year, there's not a whole lot of like completely tangible things that are happening since I know a lot of students are experiencing burnout and are kind of feeling like I'm ready for summer, so which I can understand. So looking forward into next year, I know one of the questions was what are the next steps and how do you see these dialogues continuing? Or do you think this is the most effective way to be having these conversations? And so I think moving forward, one, being sure, a very obvious next step is to synthesize the information and reflection that we got and put it out again in the newsletter, share it out with all of you like we just did and put it in places that students can also see it because I think that was the hard thing last time is that it was in the newsletter, it was, we shared it, but students didn't get that back, which is a huge missing piece because then they aren't hearing what their other peers are talking about and that a lot of their opinions are also echoed throughout the student body. And then moving forward into next year, I think we have a really strong group of students who want to see this continued and I think with strong adult partners, which we also have. It can be something that we do on a more structured and regular basis and also in collaboration with what's going on. And so I know that this was most pressing for us at the moment and I hope that next year we can kind of dive more into our school climate and culture and things around that. So I don't know exactly what you're looking for, but we don't have any super strict next steps, but I think figuring out how we're going to continue to have this. Yeah, Jeswin, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I think it's not specifically like what happened like right now, this conversation, but with the previous conversation, I'm not sure if it was complete coincidence or not, but we did get a new hall monitor. I think his name is Eric and he's quite a guy and he does his job pretty well. He brings a sort of strictness back when it comes to getting here on time at school and loitering students in the hallways, but definitely, to be honest, because of him, I feel that a lot of like the nuisances we found around like students leaving the school unauthorized or like doing some like, you know, not so great stuff in the bathrooms or whatnot kind of got reduced due to this new hall monitor, which is a pretty good step that I feel that administration might have taken. I hope, I'm not sure it was totally in response to the first dialogue we had, but regardless, things have changed in my eyes quite a bit from that first dialogue to where we are now. So I'm positive that when we come back next school year, there's going to be some more changes. We can definitely take action on.
Any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you guys for that report. That was really great. Next up is the report from Michelle. Did everybody receive that? And just wondering if anybody had any questions for her? She is available. Go ahead, Christine. The report. Do you know at what point it would be possible to project some of the tax impacts we'd be seeing from the changes to the waiting formula? So the AOE says that they're going to model, they have to change the calculation of equalized pupils into the new types of weights. And they did tell us at the last meeting that we were at in May that they were going to attempt to work towards that in June because every district wants to know. So, you know, certainly I'll be looking for that and if I can use that to project what that way mean, I'll certainly share that. Anyone else have any questions for her? Okay. Thanks, Michelle, for the report. That was really good. The next one we have Ray. So we asked Ray to come and as everybody saw, we gave a link to Bridget's email about PCBs. I know Christine, you had brought that up as a topic for the, an agenda request topic. So we figured that we would have Ray come and see if there's any updates specifically on the PCBs if everybody, anybody has additional questions. Anybody have any questions? Ray, do you have any updates for us as far as the PCBs go?
Yes, I understand that there's been some, some questions about the methodology that the state is used in scheduling the PCB testing. And so I have a handout that I'll hand out now. And basically they had a rating system and the first page shows what that, that rating system was. And then the, the next page is the, is a spreadsheet showing all of our schools. You'll notice that Crescent Brook isn't on there because it falls out of the date range for concern about PCBs. Sure. Yeah, if you did bear with me, I can, yeah, I can try to do that. One thing that we did find is that this last week, they finalized the, the schedule for, for the testing at the different schools. And that's been updated on this, on this spreadsheet. They did, they realized, the state realized that there's no way they could get all the testing done by the original deadline of July of 2024. So they've extended it now out to 2025. Right, right. The, there's, I believe there's only three companies that are doing all the testing for all the, all the schools.
I had assumed that Warren would be, was when it was because of the past remediation. I assume that was the last project that that was taken care of. But also why are there no reported free and reduced lunch at Harwood? Wouldn't that impact our ranking? And it says none reported. And, and I understand why we might not have faced in. But Brookside and Harvard aren't on there at all.
I don't have that answer.
It's going to be shared to Kelly, so you guys on Zoom will be able to see it. So if you give just a second. Quick question, Ray. With the H737, was that actually with the 22 million for the PCBs? Was that actually like official that there is the 22 million or is it still have, does it go to the governor for official signature kind of thing? Do you know?
Not aware of that, so.
Amount was included in a bill that was signed. I think it was the overall education funding bill.
To me, that sounds like quite a small amount for the entire state. Is that true? Like that doesn't seem.
Yes, there was a joke at a meeting I was at that Burlington might use all of that money.
Exactly, yeah. Interesting.
Go ahead, Christine. And I assume this is like, the state is contracting somebody to do all the testing and if we wanted to speed it up, we'd have to do that on our own at the risk of not getting reimbursed.
That's correct. And they've contracted for our schools with ATC, who has done a lot of work for us in the past.
I don't want to miss anybody on Zoom. If you have questions, just make sure to raise your hand. Go ahead, Lisa.
Would you be willing to just remind us of the timeline? Once a school is tested, if, if we're found to be above the threshold, what's the timeline going forward after that?
If you look at the, the, the very last couple of pages in, in that report that I sent you and I'll, I'll get these shared out to the, to the board so that other people can see them as well. This is something you can find on the, on the Department of Environmental Conservation page, which I'll share a link with Kelly to that. And it talks about the action levels and when they find things, what, what we have to do. Basically what they've said is that once they've done the testing and they have the results, they'll contact us and tell us what next steps are. And it depends on where that level is as to what we have to do next.
Kim, go ahead.
Um, because I'm new, I don't know exactly how to ask this or, so when I read the letter from Libby Bonesdale that Bridget included in a board packet two meetings ago, she's the superintendent at Montpelier School District. You know, she wrote a letter to the state that was, that outlined the sort of domino effect of this and I'm sitting here thinking like, how can we possibly plan for what could be incredible disruption in our schools, particularly when three of our schools are being tested at the same time? And so I don't know when the appropriate time is to talk about this, but I, I'm curious, like, could other people weigh in on sort of what's the plan of attack for figuring this out? Because it has the potential to be incredibly disruptive and expensive, but more than just expensive, like incredibly disruptive to families who've already been disrupted and teachers and students.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
I don't know how, even how to ask the question. I guess I'm expressing a concern and wondering if anyone at the table has could just weigh in on sort of when is, when will we tackle this? When is the best time to tackle it? And or do we just wait until the state does the testing and then, and then we find out where we are? I, I don't, I don't know. I'm just curious. Like I like to pre-plan things, but particularly if they're going to be super disruptive, but maybe we can't. So is there a way that we can plan for what could be an incredibly disruptive and expensive thing for our community?
Right, so that first step is the testing that the state's going to do. And that's going to tell us, it's going to tell us if we have a big problem. It's not going to tell us if we have a small problem. So if it, they do, they do their tests and we fall below the threshold, it's all good. We just, we let it go until we're about to do a project. And then we have to do what they call bulk testing, is they identify materials that need to be tested for the possibility of PCBs. And then we do individual testing there. And that's where this can get very expensive. Because it can go, you can spend anywhere from $2,000 to half a million dollars in testing, depending on what they're finding because it's an incremental test. You test the suspect material and you, and you test the material adjacent to it. And if that comes back positive, you come back, you do more tests a little further away from it. And as you can imagine, when you're talking about a, a, a building that, that's a brick building, you're testing those, those bricks and you have to test everything below whatever is tested positive, including the ground. And when you, when you find them, now they have to be below a certain threshold. And if they're not, then you have to actually physically remove them. And this is where the expense just goes crazy. A simple project of changing a window can cost you as much as 300% of the cost of the window for that one particular item, depending on what, on what you end up with. So there's really no way to know what you're getting into until you start that testing. And you have to be prepared that when you start that testing, that, that when you, you find those results, you have to create a plan and you have a short window of time to create the plan. And we do that with the help of experts and with the folks at the state. And we create a plan for remediation or mitigation. And that this, this is a product that we probably want to remediate rather than just cover up. And so that's, that's really where we are. So we, we, it's a, let's get the, the first phase of testing done. The state's going to do and then we'll take it from there. And we'll be testing, Christine, you mentioned Warren. We, we did remediate PCBs when we did that project, but we'll have to go back and test just because we tested areas that we were disturbing. We didn't test the entire building. So now that they'll identify those and that, that's why that falls further, further on the list. Yes.
I'm just going to throw out a worst case theory here. Say we have three schools that are tested between October and December in 2023 and they all three come up, that come back as above threshold. Is there a possibility that those schools would be unusable at that point?
Would depend on how much above the threshold they are. That that, that last page shows some of those scenarios and the, and your, your responses to them, when you, what your options are. And depending on what it is, is, is what you have to do. So it's if this, then that. It's possible. It's also possible that you're not going to find anything. That's, we hope for that, but we need to prepare for you know, that not being the case.
Any other question on PCBs? Okay. So the other thing we were just hoping for, Ray, was just an update on the, I think it was timing of the roof repairs, I think, or the roof with hardwood, I think is what yeah, the roof. Do you have timing on that when that might be done?
So that's, that's good. We have a contract with AC Hathon. They're going to start the third week of July and they're saying it'll take them about three weeks where they're permitting to, to complete it. That's the earliest they can start it. That's when they can get the materials here. That's been an ongoing problem for us this last year, but particularly in the last few months is just sourcing materials and getting them here. Flooring projects that we have, some are being postponed until the December or February break because we can't get the materials out of Europe. And a lot of, a lot of other materials, you know, they're coming, they come from all over the world. And so that, that's been a struggle.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Any last questions for him before we move on? Okay. Thank you, Ray, very much. So the next thing is we received some highlights from Moretown. So I think Kelly's going to bring that up. Just one second. So it looks like the circus made its way to Moretown Elementary School. And Lisa, you had kids there, right? They participated? And usually in years past, it was always held in the gym, which was a little hot. So it looks like it was held out on the, is it tennis courts, Lisa?
It was on the tennis courts and we had a beautiful day, so it worked out really well. Yeah, it's always a lot of fun.
Awesome. So I'm really glad to, to see that the circus made its way to Moretown. It was always a really fun event there. So Kelly, did you want to add anything?
And so I had the, the privilege of going to Zen Barn over, well, not over the weekend, it was, I think, just a couple of days ago on Monday. And the Harwood Assembly played and I had never heard all these talented musicians that are at Harwood. And it was pretty incredible to watch about 20 students or so flow in and out of off the stage singing and playing musical instruments. And it was incredible. So if you ever have a chance to see the Harwood Assembly, that would be a, a good choice. I think they might be playing down at Jazz Fest or maybe you know Christine, but no. Or some so. Yeah. And then another shout out was that today I had attended the, the assembly at Harwood here and both there were actually a bunch of students that received multiple awards across all curriculum areas. And just a special shout out to Maisy and Jeswin for receiving leadership awards on top of other awards. So it was really great to see just the hard work that the students are doing and the vibe was really great. So anyway, that was just.
Congratulations to you two.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next, we're moving into our discussion point. So the first thing is the assignment on Robert's rules. Realized when I was putting together kind of the leadership report that what the the professional development committee came up with for as far as the webinar stuff really didn't hit on what we thought it was going to be. But then I did notice recently, I think in, if you guys get the emails from the Mont School Board Association, I think in August, they are doing an in-depth one, I feel like, maybe early August. So anyway, so Kelly and I ended up putting together some links of some, I did a couple of, I think, resources. We also did some YouTube videos. We thought were kind of, I thought might be kind of good. So we just kind of want to open up for discussion to see what people thought, if they had questions, need clarification. Anyone? Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, I had one question. Actually, I did agree with you. I thought that, can you all hear me? Yeah, okay. I, I thought that the, the, it was pretty basic information, you know, on, on the, the school board side that we look at. The only thing was that we had had an issue last month when we tabled a, a motion, we tabled, you know, we had that motion on the table about when we were going to talk about the discipline policies for Harwood and we, and it was tabled and I wasn't sure, was it seconded? Did we have it seconded? I thought that the chart that the School Board Association put out that talked about when you had a motion and the various things that you could do with the motion and when it required a second and when it didn't. And I thought that it talked about that when you want to table, when somebody says they're going to table a motion, that it has to be seconded. And I wasn't sure that we did and I was just curious about that. And I think we need to be, I think we need to think about that. And maybe even ask Pedro if, if that's the case. Nope, I can't hear anything. Let me turn off my.
So yes, so that would be on me. I do apologize if there was supposed to be a second and I, I missed that. So I do want to apologize for that, but Lisa, did you want to go ahead?
I, I'm not sure that that was ever a motion that was. Oh, I thought she's, okay, sorry.
Cindy, were you referring to maybe the call to question, not the table, the motion?
I'm not, I'm not even sure now. I was trying to think back on it and I, I don't have any of the records or anything. So I just, I, I just thought, I think it's just, I, I thought that it was an issue that was, that people were, you know, had some concerns about and stuff and I, we had discussed it plenty of time and I think it was time, it would have been time, fine, I bet you we would have had a two-thirds vote to table it, which is what it requires. But anyway, that was all. I just, I just thought that I was curious whether there was something I was missing.
Yes, Kim, go ahead.
I, I would be curious. It would be helpful for me to understand what the expectation is in terms of knowing Robert's rules backwards and forwards. Is that the expectation or is it that we have some people on the board that we can defer to, which is what seems to happen? I don't, I mean, if I'm supposed to study them and learn them, I will, but I would need to know kind of my timeline and that sort of thing. So if somebody could just clarify that, that would be helpful.
I think the general idea is that we know kind of the basics of the Robert, of Robert's rules, but there are those people on the board that do know more. But I think it, for basics, I think it would be important to, to know the ba, the basics. Does anybody else have a thought?
I think, I think that there are a lot of meetings, the moderator is the one who really is the, knows the deal on, on it. I, I, I think, Kristen, what you just said makes the most sense that, that I think all of us should have a basic understanding. That's why the professional committee thought we should be taking a look at this pretty carefully. And I think it was one of the things we were going to ask Pedro about, I think in, in, in June, with what we should be, you know, proceeding with, what we should be know, you know, what we should have available to us. So anyway, I don't think, Kim, you need to be sitting down and studying all of Robert's rules. It's like huge book and, and I don't think, I, I don't think that's the answer. We just, I just want to be sure we do stuff right.
Would you like to go? Oh, and Cindy, if you're all set, if you want to put your hand down?
Cindy, that was a good lead into what I was going to ask, which is, is the board sort of, is it written that we're supposed to use Robert rules of order or is, is it something that we just do to make meetings run more easily? You know, when, is there any deviation from them at any time or is it pretty strict in line using them?
You, you go ahead, Ashley.
I watched the, or listened to the webinar today and it is a state requirement that we use Robert's rules for our meeting because we're a public body. And when we have a meeting, it's a, it's a meeting, but it's not, it's a meeting in front of the public, but it's a meeting amongst us. So we have to follow those rules.
Lisa.
I have a comment and a question. To Kim's question, I think that there's an advantage to certainly knowing the basics. I will say that there's an advantage in knowing a little bit more than the basics if you really want to be able to assert yourself in meetings. So there's, you know, as if you, I thought the YouTube links that you said about were actually pretty helpful. If, the more you know, the more you can use your will a little bit more in the meetings. So I, I was motivated to learn a little bit more. I think that the standard has been that everyone knows the basics. There's certain There are certain people that know much more than others. There's also resources we can refer to in a meeting if we're confused. But I don't think you need to know it inside and out. My question was around, uh, what's the word? Point of clarity or point of information? When somebody uses something like that, like point of clarity, are they allowed to just then go into their point of clarity? Or do they need to be recognized by the chair to, to have the, you know, ability to do that?
I don't, I'm not 100% sure on that answer. I mean, I would assume that, you mean, are you talking about point of clarity or point of order? What do you, which?
Again, in the, in that YouTube, there's, it seemed like there was a few. So point of information was like when you thought you had some information that was relevant, that was maybe like not, was missing from the conversation, or, you know, going against what somebody else was saying. Point of order, point of clarity was more like, you know, we're going off track. This isn't in the agenda, something like that. I was a little confused of what, I think our practice has been that if somebody raises that, they kind of go directly into whatever their point of order is. And I was wondering if that is how it's supposed to be used, or if we're supposed to like raise our hand, say point of order, and then get permission to do that.
Want to go ahead?
I, I'm pretty sure now, if you, you can usually Google your questions and just put R O N R for Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised. This one says you may interrupt a speaker for these reasons. Point of information, question of privilege, point of order, appeal and object. So, and usually things have gotten out of order, so it, it does need to be interrupted generally.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Jonathan.
I, I had a, it's kind of a comment and a question, and Ashley may remember this situation. It came up in the questions at the, towards the end of the webinar, where someone asked, is it ever acceptable for a non board member to be put in charge of the board? And the lady answering the question was like, absolutely not. But I was at a school board meeting in Warren, and Ashley was at this school board meeting where they brought in a special Robert's Rules ruler to preside over the meeting because things had gotten so out of hand in a previous meeting. And that person was certainly not an elected official of the Warren School Board, which is at the time how it ran. And I just thought that was interesting that not only did the webinar not, like they didn't cover that, but no one seemed to know if that was legal or not, but it sure seemed to happen. And nobody, nobody brought up any points of order or anything like that. And I wondered if Ashley had heard that question and thought of that same meeting.
Didn't occur to me because I thought that the meeting that you're talking about was a while ago, but I do remember that it was. I thought that person was not really running the meeting. They were consulting running the meeting. But maybe I remember it differently than you do. But I, I did, I did hear that question and I did wonder, not, I didn't really think of that case, but.
Jonathan, do you want to put your hand down unless there's some, unless you, okay. Any other questions or comments or feedback? Or do you, do we want, I know I had said in the leadership report, you may have to do this again. Would that be beneficial to anybody? Or are there certain questions? I know Pietro is supposed to be coming next month. So are there certain things from him that you want to know? Does anybody have an opinion? Do we feel good on this? Go ahead, Kim.
I, as a new board member, I would appreciate being pointed toward resources that I, that others have found helpful so that I can educate myself more quickly. As opposed to just trying to seek them out and find, you know, find them on my own and maybe have to wade through some. So I would just like that. And it may be that we could compile a list that could be given to future board members to point them in the same direction, just as a a little like, here you go, these are great ones. I would appreciate that.
The two YouTube videos were good.
Okay. Kelly, did you want to go ahead?
I, I think that guy, that the YouTube videos, I think there's like seven of them. He does a lot of different ones and breaks it down. So yeah, so if you just Google it, but you'll be able to, I think we even put in the series into the leadership report that he had done. Rand, yes, Rand.
No, I think that might, that's a good idea, Kim, that we could kind of keep just a running list of resources. And if other board members find resources, if you want to just email us, we'll keep a running list for ongoing information, also for future board members would probably be a good idea. Okay. Any other questions before we move on or feedback or anything? Okay. So our next discussion item is was about introducing Dr. Mike to the community. As you know, he'll be starting July 1st. So in our leadership report, we had, Kelly and I have been, have been talking with him for transition purposes. And we had proposed the idea of each town's board members, so like Lisa and I, who are from Moretown, would email Dr. Mike so that we could set up kind of like a, a community gathering for him and his wife so that he can meet people in Moretown and we would advertise it. So, and student reps, you guys are more than welcome to join in with your, with your, your town reps. So I just would like feedback on that. What did people think? Do they think it's a good idea? Like, thoughts? Go ahead, Lisa.
I think it's a great idea to have a number of events. I'm wondering if every town is too many? Only kind of for them? Maybe, maybe not. The answer could be no to that. But like I could see combining, you know, doing a few valley ones, not necessarily like needing to do a Moretown, Waitsfield, Fiston and Warren, you know? That's, if, if it starts feeling like too much, that might be an option. Second question is, is there a budget? Like, how are we going to deal with, you know, the cost of renting out the town hall or having refreshments, that kind of thing?
We hadn't thought, excuse me, we hadn't thought about that yet, but we can think about it. And get back to everybody on that. Go ahead, Kim.
Do, I like the idea of combining. I think that that is wise. I don't know if it's geographic or whatever, but I would be in support of that. I think, yeah, that would be great.
What do people on Zoom think? Do, does anybody have feedback from Zoom?
I think just ask Mike what they had, what their timeline is, because they might have a preference to see more or less. So kind of see where their time budget is with moving and, you know, kind of their comfort level with how much we show them.
And as the things that any town that only has one rep, we will definitely be there to extra support. Hopefully that won't be the case. Hopefully you'll have a person. Yes, Christine, go ahead.
I guess the only other piece that I would want to bring up about multiple events is that you also suggested that we get to as many as we can. And so it's, it's a lot for, I think, board members as well. So I would definitely support. I mean, you could have, you could have as few as two, might be nice to have three. We could always use our schools and most towns usually, I would imagine they wouldn't charge for a rental fee.
Go ahead, Ashley.
I think Christine's probably right that we could get the town halls for nothing because it's a, you know, everyone wants to meet him. And we could probably do potluck, you know? I mean, I know it's a pain, but I bet he's going to want to meet more people. In my conversation with him, it felt like he was excited to get out in the community and meet some of people who are interested in him. So I'm all for it.
So the timeframe that I think Kelly and I had proposed was sometime from, have, have these go on from July 1st until like the end of August to try to have them, you know, have this kind of wrapped up before school started or the tail end of August. What, what do people think of that timeline? And as we said too, it doesn't have to be a weekend. It could be during the week if schedules allow and his schedule allows. The other thing I was just thinking too is that, you know, another good advertisement would be to just maybe attend your select board meeting in plenty of time, let them know that this is happening. That might be another way. Any other thoughts on this? Oh, Jonathan, go ahead.
I mean, I, it's a pretty, you know, you can go a lot of different directions. I, I wondered personally, I was like, maybe it would be best to have, have at least start with one. And then, or, and I was imagining it being close to, if not at the very beginning of the school year, when parents are back from vacations and re-engaged with the concept of being in school. Whereas if you plop it in the middle of the summer, I think that's a nice idea, but then I worry that we would lose a lot of potential people attending due to being summertime. For instance, like I can't, I don't know what my schedule for the summer is. I mean, I know I'm working, but it's, it's hard for me to imagine going to five different events. Whereas I'm sure Mike would want to meet as many people as possible. So I don't, I, I don't know. In other words, I don't know. It, it, I think it's a absolutely something we should do. But I wonder if we shouldn't consider when and how, and to what level and where, and how many times we try to do that. Less might be more.
Kim?
I'm thinking about our family's schedule and the realistic possibility of me attending more than the one that I'm in charge of seems low. And I'm wondering, might it make sense to schedule two or three and invite the, our communities to attend whichever two or three they, whichever one of those three that they, that works into their schedule? So it doesn't have to be just that the Warren, like if it's a, if it's at the Warren Town Hall and, you know, I'm helping out with Fiston as well. It can't, it doesn't have to just be the Warren and Fiston people that come. It could be anyone who, for that, for whom that week works well. Because I do think Jonathan's right, people have crazy schedules. And I think Christine's right, we all also have crazy schedules. So I think having three spread out through the summer at three different strategic locations in our school district. And then letting the community know that this one will be this sort of thing. Maybe they're all potluck, maybe one's something else. This one will be this sort of thing, you know, and then we could, people can attend the ones that work well for them.
Do the student reps have any thoughts on any of this? Just want to, any feedback?
I would agree that one for accessibility, just being able to say, this week works a lot better. I think that's good. And breaking it up by towns also is more of a whole view of the whole community and not just like certain aspects of it. So I'm definitely in favor of that. Yeah, I think him engaging with the community is, should be a priority. And I also know that him engaging with schools as well. So, yeah.
Lisa.
When speaking to Dr. Mike, did he have any thoughts on kind of like, is there any kind of formal format to the event? Like, I think if it's just him in a room with a ton of people, it's very possible that like somebody would go hoping to actually be able to talk to him and not really be able to engage, depending on how many people are there. Is there like a possibility of him, you know, getting up on stage and giving himself a little introduction in the beginning? You know, just having a little bit more of a formal layout, maybe at least to start. And then, and then just mingling might be beneficial so that everyone at least gets to hear from him.
Really, did you have any sense?
I think, I think he's really open to any of the ideas. So if that's something that, you know, you were hoping for, like that format, that kind of thinking works for you and whoever it is that you're working with, I think that he would be fine with it. He would probably also be fine with just walking around, you know, mingling and stuff. So he's, he just seems really versatile and like, whatever goes, you can take it. Kind of, that, that was my sense. I guess the question that I would have is if we're going to break it down to, you know, three, I do like the idea of having three and and, and having the, the towns kind of collaborate a little bit more and do a little bit more mixing. And, you know, it doesn't have to be kind of more silos and stuff. So how, what, what towns would you see? I mean, for me, I see like Duxbury and Waterbury kind of working together. And then Waits, Waitsfield and Moretown and Fiston and Warren. So and then breaking it that way, breaking it down that way for three, three meet and greets. So.
How would people feel about having one in July, one in August, and then one in September? Spacing them out. How, what about on, on Zoom? How does that, how does that kind of, do people like that on Zoom? That way, it's kind of like, there's three different opportunities, three months in case you're busy. And then it would address, Jonathan, the idea of people on vacation could come to wherever the September, the September event is. You know, that, Maddie, I do see your hand up. Did you want to go ahead?
Um, sorry. I was thinking that Zoom would definitely, I think having Zoom as an option is definitely good because then if someone's not just like vacation, there are some people who I find it more convenient to do Zoom from home because they can take care of their families, or they might be sick and they can still attend. So I think having Zoom is also a very good option.
So just, just a second, Jonathan, and then I'll get to you. We, we have talked to Dr. Mike about hosting a Zoom like Q and A with him kind of once the school year. I, I can't exactly remember the timing, but I think we talked about, I'm assuming it probably be, would be after the school year had started. So I think that that might be an opportunity, Maddie, for those people who aren't able to attend one of the events in person. Do you think that that would be kind of hit that, that nail on the head, Maddie, with that option?
Uh, yeah, that's what, that was, I was kind of seconding that when you said that, seconding that I thought that was good option.
Jonathan, I saw your hand before. Did you?
I, I just wanted to strongly agree with the idea of having one of them be after the summer so that people that might not be around and might not be engaged with the, the idea of school during the summer would be aware of and then be able to do that. I think, I think that would really cover it really nicely if we had three opportunities spaced out like you just recommended.
Um, what about the, the, like the towns? How do people feel about like Waterbury, Duxbury being one together? And then Moretown and Waitsfield? And then Warren and Fiston? How do people, do people like that idea of those groupings? Yeah. Go ahead, Kim.
Um, yeah, I'm thinking that I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if we need to have the people who work on a specific one of them be the rep from that town. Like, I don't feel like that's super necessary. Like, I, like, I'm having this vision of, of one of them being at the Waterbury Reservoir, so everyone can bring their families and we can have a barbecue. It'd be really fun. And I'd love to work on that one, but that's, you know, that's not, that wouldn't be Fiston and Warren. So I would, I would think it might make sense to just set the dates and then have the board members divide up and say like, I can do that one because that works well for my schedule. I'll focus on, it doesn't, you know, I don't care which town I plan the event in, is my, my feeling.
What, what do people think about that? Oh, sorry, Jeswin, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll just make it quick. But I think grouping the towns together is a really good idea because I think, yeah, you could find those. I think having a barbecue at the reservoir is a great idea. I would 100% come to that. I just had a question on like, how much prior knowledge do community members have about Dr. Mike? Like, because when you say like Q and A or like a meet and greet, like if, if they know a little more prior than like a meet and greet, it's more like a get to like talk to them in person, like get to know them. But if like, community members don't really know him, then would there need to be more structure around like, he does a whole, like, you will like, you know, go on stage, tell him, tell, talk about himself. And then would he, we'd go into like meet and greets? Like, I'm not sure if like, have we done any other like, I don't know, measures before where we like, put out some information about him? Or like, what the structure would be around if we like, you might set up one of his events, how would we introduce him? I don't know. Unless we're trying to figure that out, which we are, but like, I just want to know if there's any ideas on like, how? how if that makes sense.
So just so I understand. So is your question like at basically advertising him? Is that what I?
Kind of like, like, yeah.
Yeah.
How much prior knowledge people have about him? To make people attend those get meet.
Oh, what do what do we know now? What do people know now about him?
Yeah, yeah.
Um. Yeah, I mean, I would, I'm going to, I'm now it's just an assumption. But that, you know, we had put out the press releases about him and the newspapers have done articles about him. And of course, we did do the the survey when we were doing it um the interviews and those are broadcasted. So I have a, I'm just going on a hunch that there's a portion of the community that knows that we have a new superintendent and who it is, but that's just an assumption. Um.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah.
Um, Anna, did you ha- you had your hand up?
Uh, yeah, I think to to finish Jesswin's question too, it it seems like whichever board member, whichever event they're kind of helping to get up and running gets to kind of gear a little bit more, what format he'll present in to to give the community more information, whether it's a five, 10 minute speech solo, or whether it's more mingling like that. That's very flexible is my impression. Um, don't know, I can't think of too much more we can do to advertise that we have a new superintendent like coming up other than the local newspapers and things like that. Um, but um I also wanted to see um regarding um his getting to know our community. And part of this is asking him how much he already knows about our community and it it I know when I've moved to a totally new place, it was really great to sort of have one kind of person to go to and actually take an afternoon to drive around and see the different places and see the different towns. So especially if the towns are combining um and we're just gonna do, you know, more limited events. It might be nice to offer Mike that option to drive around with somebody and really kind of see um the different air, the different towns, especially with the events combined.
Any other questions? So do we want to try to do dates dates today? Or do we want to think about it and we can have it as another sort of finalization? Yes, Lisa.
Kelly should work on three dates and then send it around and see if we get, you know, if we can have people sign up for them. I think it might just be the simplest way to do it.
Right, Kim.
I also think we should be mindful when pairing. They, well, I mean, so I'm thinking about Facetown and Facetown, South Facetown is over by Warren, North Facetown, where I live is over by Moretown. So um, and there isn't, I can't think of a place. So I was just brainstorming locations that I thought would be cool for group um gatherings like that. There's many in Waitsfield. I'm sure there are some in Warren. I don't, I'm not as, yeah, I'm not yeah, yeah. And I'm just not super familiar with Warren. I don't go over there a lot. Um, and but I can't think of anywhere in Facetown, honestly, other than the school, because it's so, it's just the nature of Facetown. And so I I wonder if we should think of some way, I don't know. If Dr. Mike wants to know Facetown, he might need something more than the meet and greet, I guess, is what I'm saying.
So Cindy, I'll get to you in just one second. How about this? If people have ideas of where to host these events, why don't you go ahead and send them to Kelly and I and we'll kind of come back, you know, or or we'll put together a list of places in each town that were suggested. Does do people like that idea? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kim.
Also, if you could just um send around the possible dates, I think that in the same document would be helpful. And then we can do some matching up.
Cindy, you go right ahead.
Sure. Do you think we also should touch base with Dr. Mike when we're thinking about dates? That's all. I that's why I wouldn't want to do it tonight.
Yeah. So what we can do is when we uh when Kelly and I come up with some preliminary dates, we can kind of send over an email to him on say, hey, what do you think about these dates? And then either yay or nay or come up with option B. Does that sound good? Okay. Cindy, do you want to put your hand down unless there's anything else you'd like to add? So do we feel or we feel good about this discussion and and kind of the plan going forward and what Kelly and I will work on? Kelly, did you want to add anything? Okay, Zoom, Zoom people are good. Okay. Great. So we will move on from that. Um, so next is going to be action items. And the first one is to approve the flag policy procedures. Um, sorry, I put that in the board packet and I think um sorry, a million pieces of paper over here. Um, I think what I did is I highlighted the um, the portion in F that we were discussing the last time. I think I highlighted that in yellow just so that would kind of draw your attention. So I believe that I did kind of, I rewatched the video to make sure I think I got the wording right. And then uh Tori also had sent me, I had I had asked her to kind of send me the language she had talked about at the meeting. So um I I think I got it right when I changed it. First, I'd be looking for a motion to um approve the procedures for policy E eighteen. Is there any motion? Please, okay. We're just working on technical behind the scenes stuff. Just bear with us for just one second. So does that um motion look good, Kelly? Uh, Lisa. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, Ashley. Um, so now we can have discussion. Is there any feedback um that anybody would like to um give on this? Um. Did anybody have any feedback? No, everybody feels good about it. Okay. So I'm not seeing any hands on in Zoom land and I don't see any here. So we'll just go ahead and vote then. Okay. Okay, so the uh motion is to approve the flag policy procedures. Um, Jonathan.
Yes.
Okay. Um. Yeah, Li- Lisa. Yes. Okay, sorry. Um, Kim. F. Just one second, we're just. Okay, um, Ashley. Oh, Bobby is not here. Um, Christine.
abstain.
Okay. Uh, Cindy.
Yes.
And um, Ayana.
Yes.
Cindy, you are a yes, correct? Okay. And Ayana, you said you were a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, what's that percentage? So Christine, can I just ask you a quick question? Do I, if it's, does it have to have be over fif- fifty? This part, I'm not sure. Could you just scroll down to the totals? So do I need to vote?
The vacant seat shouldn't be counted towards our
Yep.
total. Take out the five percent there. Because really, our, the amount of our board is eighty nine point eight percent, right? That take out the open Duxbury value as well.
Okay.
And then you have your.
So that should be good. I don't have, okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so that will pass. So I'll make sure to get this to the people in the central office and we'll get that all updated. Um, so I believe the next item is to adopt policy D six was for, which was the substitute policy. I would just need a motion on that.
So moved.
Okay. We're just gonna bring up the tally sheet. Um, Ayana, that was you who made the motion, correct?
Who, me?
Who who made the motion?
I thought I did, but that's okay.
Cindy, okay, that's fine. Um, is there a second? Lisa, okay. Um, any discussion on adopting policy D six? Okay. So everybody ready to vote? No, I think we're good. Bring, let's bring up the tally sheet. Just one second. Okay. Um, Ashley. Uh, Christine. Cindy.
Yes.
Ayana.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Lisa. Kim. F and Kelly. Okay, that's gonna pass. So our last action item is um to appoint a new board member to Duxbury. So Life, if you would like to come up and join us at the board table, you can have a seat right there. And um, did everybody get the email that I forwarded to you from the um Duxbury Select Board? Okay. Um, so you're given five minutes to go ahead and then um and then the board may have some questions for you.
Hey. Thank you. Uh, my name is Life Legaros. I'm interested in serving on the board as the Duxbury representative, as you know. And thank you for the opportunity to address you briefly. Um, about myself, uh, I parent along with my wife, two um children who are both gonna be at Cross at Brook next year. One is a seventh grader and one is a fifth grader. Um, they've been here since kindergarten. They've had great experiences here and uh just huge shout out to our educators. Um, I try to be active in the community in different ways. I've um participated in district based stuff like the visioning sessions that happened uh not too long ago. Um, I go to student led Socrates cafes whenever I can. I co-facilitated um with some students um some of the community conversation sessions that the board sponsored. Um, I think it was in twenty sixteen. Um, I facilitated a book study uh at the Waterbury Public Library called Race Conversations. And uh I serve on the steering team and co-facilitate uh the education team of Rourke, the Waterbury Area Anti-Racism Coalition. And uh I love soccer. And I do consider that a very important community institution. Um, I've coached both in the Valley and Waterbury and I play in pickup games in both. Along with a certain excellent player that's at this table. Um, professionally, I I'm I'm an educator. I my my title is Professional Development Coordinator at the Tarrant Institute for Innovative Education um with the University of Vermont. Um, but essentially, I I spend most of my time working with teachers and administrators on school change, um particularly middle school, um to make them more student centered and equitable. Um, I also do research and blogging in that capacity. And I put a link to the some of my blog posts if if you're interested. Um, and I've actually worked with this district as part of that job when I first moved here. That's part of why I moved here, actually. Um, and I've worked with a bunch of other districts and schools around the state as well. Uh, I'm I'm kind of a newbie, so I I moved here um in twenty fifteen. I grew up in Nebraska, very, very Flatlander, if you know Nebraska. Um, and in Massachusetts, where I was for uh twelve years or so, I taught math at middle school and secondary. I was director of math at the State Education Agency for eight years. Worked as an assistant principal, uh curriculum director, a math interventionist, STEM teacher. So, yeah, education. Um, my my identity, which I think is is relevant and important, um, I'm I'm white, male, cisgendered, heterosexual. Um, I do have Japanese heritage, so I experienced some racism as a as a kid, but um at this point, this is how I sort of um present. And so I'm I'm just try to be really thoughtful about the privileges I carry. Um, and so I've I've worked to 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 do some some personal work, some some unlearning, some learning about um these systems of oppression. Um, I think that those systems based on identity divide our society in a lot of ways. Um, and of course, the the suffering falls on those who are marginalized. Um, so essentially, my personal kind of central project is to try to dismantle white supremacy and patriarchy. Um, and um I think that those things hurt everybody, including people who who benefit in many ways from those systems. And, you know, I'm not just talking about uh the most violent and egregious um versions of those systems, but also just the ways it shows up in everyday life. And it hurts the way that people interact with each other in our institutions. Um, so my my hope is that we can find ways to be more united in our society and for people to be um more free and valued as their true selves. And I believe we kind of make that happen um in all spaces that we that we operate if possible. So the reasons I want to be involved, um the service part is important. I so appreciate what you all do. Um, and I've, you know, sent emails and and bugged you in various ways over the years. And so I'm trying to step up and and get involved and learn about Robert's rules or whatever I need to do to make that happen. Um, I also think this would be a great platform. I've heard from many of you to connect with people across our community that otherwise I might not um be able to interact with as much um around the common ground of of our of our kids, our youth. Um, I'm also really interested in in applying systems thinking. Um, school board is an important part of that. And um I really think our schools could help our students um create better systems in the future. Um, I'm really process oriented. I'm not coming in here with a bunch of ideas about outcomes um that I think are really important um to make happen. Um, so I'm gonna try to be humble to listen um and learn from you all, work together. Um, I think, you know, equity, which is kind of my core value, I think comes out not just in outcomes, but in processes. So it's the way we kind of interact with each other. Um, so, you know, we can kind of create that together here. And I think there's a lot of that going on and I want to participate in that. Um, and then just the last thing is, you know, I think we have asset in our community. Um, again, just amazing, amazing educators here. Um, work with them professionally, what I've seen through my kids, um, just have absolute huge respect um for educators and administrators and staff and of course, students. Um, there's a lot of really cool stuff happening here. I mean, we heard about it tonight from Maisy and Jeswin, um Harkness, the student leadership. Um, it's a really special place, the Moretown Circus uh Arts and Residence, you know, and just um so much that the board can support around those. Um, I'm very aligned with the the board vision statement. Um, I think it's good. Um, there's, you know, some really important terminology there that we can kind of figure out together. Some really important terminology there that we can kind of figure out together. Um. But, um. I, I, I believe in it. And, um, it's just an exciting time with the new superintendent and you all being the incredible people you are. So. I humbly, um, offer my service and, um. However, it turns out, I really appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, does anybody have any questions for him? Anybody on Zoom land have any questions? Anybody in the room? Okay, so I'd be looking for a motion. You guys battle it out. Who wants to do it?
Move to vote, uh, Life onto the board.
Kelly's going to bring up a tally sheet so we can make sure you get your wording just right. How, Jonathan, how does that, um? Wording seem?
That's great.
Okay, is there a second? Need any further discussion? Okay, Lisa, go ahead.
I would just like to speak in favor of Life's appointment. I think he's been a really positive, um, contributing member. The school board even just as a community member, um, coming to us with your, with your thoughts, um, and. And oftentimes really challenging the board to, um, move in really positive directions and, um, again, be that process oriented. Um, mindset I think is really helpful. And I think that. As a board, um, were. I think you, you, he would fit into the culture of the board, um, as far as. Uh, coming from a place of humbleness and, and really looking for dialogue and, um, and listening as much as talking.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
I would just strongly second what Lisa just said.
Be gone. Cindy? Did you want to say something? You're muted. Still muted. All right. She. Okay. Does anybody else want to say anything else before we go ahead and vote? Okay. Uh, Kelly, do you want to bring up the tally sheet? Okay. Checking on one quick thing. Ashley?
Yeah, stick, yes.
Christine?
I'm going to abstain and just, yeah, I think you have to put it in the abstaining column because also like. I realized Bobby, who's not here and Marlena, who's not here, was counted in the last total.
Even if they didn't vote, it's sort of, uh.
Well, no, in that hundred percent. Oh, that's in the total out, out of. Okay, denominator.
Cindy? She's, do you want me to come right back to you? Ayana?
Yes.
Uh, Jonathan Young?
Yes.
Cindy, how you doing on your microphone? Lisa?
Yes.
Kim? Are you after? Cindy, do you want to do a thumbs up? Okay, so she's, she's a thumbs up, yes. Okay, and do you want to just scroll down to the total so we can see that? Congratulations. Welcome to the school board. So you'll need to be sworn in before our next meeting. So you'll be able to participate and, um. I can't, I don't know what else. You'll get an email address. The central office will handle all of that. Um, Cindy, you're going to have, uh, you, you have a town partner there now. She's very excited. Okay, so, um, and you're welcome to continue to sit at the table if you would like. Um, so we just have the, um, consent agenda. So I would just be looking to, uh, for a motion to, um, approve the consent agenda. Kim?
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. I would just bring up a tally sheet, make sure we have all that wording. Cindy, I hope your bike ride's going well. I see the bike in the background when you got up before. So does that look good? Yes, okay. Is there a second? Okay, Lisa, um, any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, um, is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Okay, not seeing any or hearing any that will pass. Um. Communication. So Bobby was signed up for that. Um, I know she's not here. Uh. Tori had emailed me and said that she would be listening to it, so she may be on YouTube, so she can edit it. Um. I'm. Should we stick with Bobby? Should I, I mean, I don't mind taking her place if we think that, what, anybody's thoughts? Well, I didn't have her on my absentee calendar, but, um, does anybody know? I do know that and originally. Okay, so I don't. Yeah, I know that she had a thing last, not last week, because we were not here last week. Two weeks ago, I knew that she had an event, I think. So, um, I don't mind. Yes, Lisa, go ahead.
I was just going to volunteer to write it if that's helpful.
Do you want?
She's not here.
Do you want to do it?
Yeah, happy to do that. Okay. And I'll send it to Tori for editor.
Yep, okay. Um, okay, so that, uh, so communication. Oh, Cindy, go ahead. Uh, you're, you're muted. There you go. Nope, now you're muted. You're muted. I know. Uh, we can't hear you, Cindy, because you're muted.
Mute.
All right, now you go. Oh, oh, it's like a quick, you know, you're, okay, good. Okay, good. You're, you're unmuted. What would you like to say?
One that I welcome Life to the board and wished I hadn't screwed up that, my computer right at that moment. But anyway, um, yay, Life, welcome. And secondly, wasn't Bobby away in Greece or something? Is she back from Greece?
We, we were, we were just discussing that. Some people thought that she was away. I didn't have her on my. Um. Absentee list, but that doesn't mean I didn't have it incorrect. Um, I feel like I originally had her and I double checked and she's like, no, I'll be back. So I waited her out, but that's fine. Um, so Lisa, do you want to, do you want to do it? Okay, so we'll change that to be Lisa and Tori. Um, so I'm thinking that, um. So we should include the, the Facetown open seat. Um, I had also reached out to the Facetown Select Board Chair to see if he would just be nice to mention that at their select board meeting and he was going to. So hopefully that, and then Kim recently posted on Front Porch Forum for me as well. Um, so mention that. Is there anything else additional that besides, um? What will be in the minutes? Go ahead, Christine.
Are you done or?
Yeah.
Cause I'll make a motion to adjourn if you're ready.
Sure. So she made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor? Okay.
Hi.
We'll see you guys in a couple of weeks. Have a good, great bike ride, Cindy.